We've got the safety crowbars. We've deployed 26,000 Chromebooks. Those laptops that the kids are going to learn on. And we're, you know, even during remote learning time, we're making sure that we're going to, we're going to provide breakfast and lunch for all families who need it, even during the remote times. And even those who continue on remote, we're still feeding all kids as we always do. So if you want to look at any of these things that we're doing, we've got a great website, a return to learn website, and also we've got a special email address down there at the bottom. We've got, we've had thousands and thousands of questions, of comments that have helped us to come up with this, come up with this plan to, to get ready for the school year. A big, big announcement for the city of Hazlet. I don't know if you've driven by, but our staff is in Hazlet Elementary School. It is a phenomenal facility. We've got about, about one more week of just fine tuning some things, doing some punch list items, and it'll be ready for kids. We will actually have kids coming in on August the 24th. Not, not a lot of them, but a lot of the kids who have more special needs, kids of our special ed programs, kids in our 504 programs will actually be in buildings all over the district. So Hazlet will see its first new kids, brand new kids in it next Monday on the 24th for to get, to get special services. But you will get a special, when we can do it, when we can do it safely, all of you will get a special invitation from me to have the, have the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Hazlet Elementary School. Turned out great. It really, really did turn out great. We're very proud of it. All right. And then if you want to, we've got several other, we have several other projects still being worked on from the 2017 bond. If you want to look at that, we have a special website for construction and you can always go to that and see, see where all of the, the construction projects are in the district. All right. Last part of my talk, guys, I just wanted to go over with you the election. We had to delay a couple of elections. We called a new election. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that. November 3rd, our general election date. We have the previously postponed, our, our school board elections are in May. That's, that's normal for us. But the mayor, if you remember, the governor called off all elections during the May cycle. So we postponed the NISD trustee election and we postponed the bond election of 2020 from, from May, and now we're going to have it on November, in November the 3rd, coming up here in just a couple of months. And then we have a special election called the voter approval tax rate election. It's called a VATRE. That is, that is a new terminology. Tax rate elections have been around for a long time, but the voter approval tax rate election has come about from the new school finance bill, and I'll explain that to you. So the bond election, we had a group of individuals, probably about 60 community members, community leaders, parents, teachers. They worked all last fall, the fall of 19, and right after Christmas, they presented to us a bond, you know, we, we are in a bond cycle of about every three to four years. The bond that was recommended that the board approved is for $986.6 million, and those are the, those are the major projects that you will see for those. The goal, the, the goal of this year's committee, the committee that came together for this one, they did not want to see another three-year bond cycle. They wanted to stretch it out. People have asked me, why is this larger than the ones we've done in the past? Because the, the committee wanted to give a little bit more time in between the bond elections for our, for our electorate. So this was a, this is a bigger one, and we really are doing our best to stretch it out about five to six years rather than just three to four years. So that's that. And, and we, from May to November, we did, we ran all the numbers again. We started advertising this before the May election, before it was canceled. But there will be no tax rate increase. If $986 million is approved, it will not affect the, the tax rate. We have enough local values throughout the school district to, to handle that without, without any pennies being added to the, the current INS tax rate. Those are the two tax rates that we have, and I've, I've given you this information before. You know, all Texas school districts have a maintenance on operation tax, MNO. That's, that's our operation budget. That's what pays for everything, mostly people. It pays salaries and benefits for our folks. But then any school district in Texas that has passed a bond, which that's about 96% of the school districts in Texas have an INS tax rate, and that's what, that's our mortgage payment. That's, that's what we pay our debt with from, from the bonds that have been passed in, have been passed in the past. That's where that, that money is raised. All right. So the big issue, and I'll, I'll explain to you the special election that we, that our school board has just called. House Bill 3 has just been passed this last legislative session. That is the new Texas school finance bill. We knew it was going to be a huge bill for us, and we have done, we have done all the, we've run all the traps in it. We, we know full well what it's going to do. But because, because of several different things that happened within the school bill, we are losing about 10 to 15 million dollars a year. That is, that was a huge, huge hit for us. There's about 60 school districts in the state of Texas that are called fast growth districts that we're a part of, and House Bill 3, it just, it just hammered us when it comes to revenue, being able to generate revenue. The state is not allowing local school boards to set tax rates anymore. They're, they're, they're requiring all school districts in the state of Texas to compress tax rates. So we're losing funds from, from lowering the, the MNO tax rate. We've gone to, and this is a school funding issue. We've gone to funding school districts using current year taxable values. That was a huge hit for us rather than prior year values. They've capped us at 2.5% on our value growth. And one of the things I'm disappointed in both is, you know, we were told all legislative session that we were going to be out of Robin Hood, that the state would no longer be taking money from Northwest ISD to fund other school districts. We have never been out of Robin Hood. Last year was the first year of HB3. We had to pay about $3 million last year. We're budgeting up to $7 million this year. We, we never got out of recapture in that. So, so not only, not only are we losing the 10 to 15 million dollars, but we are being capped for growth about, to about $9 million per year. It had been about, you know, we were growing about $20 million. Northwest ISD was built on about a $20 million. Then, and that just, that's just to hire enough staff for our growth, to put the buildings in place, to staff the buildings, all the things that we do. So HB3, I've already started talking to our local legislatures because we've got to, we've got to make some change in HB3. So what we have asked for, if you look at this slide, what the legislature mandated was that we drop our MNO tax rate to 91 cents. Our INS rate is going, we actually have dropped our INS rate by three pennies. We've always been at about a dollar four. That, that has been, for the last decade, we have been at a dollar four, but the state, the state legislature is mandating that we drop to 91. What we're going to ask permission from our electorate is to stay at the dollar four. So if you look at the right side of your screen with a VATRE, with a voter approval, we would like to set the, set the tax rate at the dollar four, have the INS rate with a total, with a total of a dollar 46. So that, that's the, we can access 13 more pennies by, by a vote of the electorate to make up for that money and for our growth and for the money that we're losing. So that is our, I just wanted to show you our tax rate history. You know, when, when we say we're asking permission for a higher tax rate, we're basically asking permission for the, the same tax rate we've always had, but it's lower than what the state is mandating. So that's the reason why we have to do the VATRE. So I just, I'm sure, I'm, I'm showing this graph to show everybody, that's, that was our, that's been our history. The bottom line is our INS. The only time we've raised our INS is when the voters allowed us to do that. And we've actually, we, we've, we've looked at our numbers and our values. We're actually going to be able to drop it three pennies to offset some of that request for MNO. And then you can see the middle line is our MNO. We've always been at a dollar four. We dropped it by seven pennies. Again, last year was the first year of HB3. We were mandated to drop it by seven pennies, and then we're going to ask permission to go back up to a dollar four for this, for this coming school year. And then that, that's a, that's a, the top line is the total tax rate where we've been, you know, we were a dollar 45 for a long time. We went up to a dollar 49. We dropped to a dollar 42, and then we're going to ask permission to be at the dollar 46. So what we are asking is for those 13 pennies, and that will actually bring in a, about 21 more dollars that, per year. And with that, we would be able to balance our budget and plan and, and pay for the growth that we know is coming to be able to offset that, that $9 million mark. So we would be able to balance our budget from year to year, and I'll, I'll tell you why that's important. We are going to, we're going to ask permission for the VATRE, but we also know that we have to, we have to get into our baseline budget and make sure that we are being very conservative on how we spend because we know, moving forward, even if we get the, the pennies from the VATRE, we know we're always going to be capped at $9 million per year, which we've got to be very, very careful because it takes us $6 million just to hire enough teachers from year to year for the extra growth, which leaves very little money to, to, you know, hire support staff, to, to, to provide cost of living, to pay for insurance, all those kinds of things. So why, why the bond and the VATRE now? Why did we all do this now? Well, guys, we're still growing. We're actually going to have a, our next demographic update on the 24th, this coming Monday. Right now, our projections are, if not, if we're not on track, we're, we're actually a little bit higher. And our builders all over the district have not stopped. COVID or no kept COVID. Our builders are still building homes. We've actually been looking at a VATRE, or what the, what the, what the last, the, the old bill called just a TRE for about the last five or six years. We, we have been in a deficit budget situation for about the last three years, but we've been able to kind of fight our way out of it without a TRE. Last year, we adopted a $20 million deficit budget, and the board was actually going to call a TRE then. But right at the last part of the legislative session, the House Bill 3 actually canceled all TREs for the entire state. About 400 of the 1,200 school districts in the state had already done a TRE, and we were actually going to do it last year, but we were unable to because of the law change. And so we realized, we, we will take about a $10 million chunk out of our fund balance to pay for last year's budget. This year's budget, we, we adopted about a $25 million deficit. Again, in those years that we were gaining about $20 million a year, that really didn't, you know, the $25 million was about right, but with this cut in revenue from the state, that really put us behind the, the eight ball, and so that we, we've decided to, to call the VATRE now. All right. And there, and you know, that, and there's the justification. Everything that we have, and this is part of our next week's demographic report. Home starts, closings, inventory are all up. Even in the world of COVID, everything is, everything is up. So that's what we'll have on the ballot, guys. In November, we will have five propositions. The first four propositions, A, B, C, and D are, are going to be for the bond. And then E will be the VATRE. And we've got the website to, to, to inform everybody, and I'm going to be talking about this for the next two or three months, all over the place, and getting people's, having, you know, questions and getting people's input and everything that we can do. All right, Mayor, that is, that is all my presentation. I can either stay on my presentation, anybody have questions, or I can come back if, if I figure out how to unshare my screen. Diane, are you going to take back?
Okay, Council, anybody, anybody have a question or a comment for Dr. Warren?
Mayor, is it okay if I speak?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor, and Council. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Todd Kindle. I'm a business leader in the community with the General Electric, now Lab Tech Transportation Business. As you all know, as you go through our district, it's difficult not to recognize the growth that we've seen in the last 10 years. As a business leader in this community, the Northwest School District's been a critical partner for us as we've created over 800 jobs in this community, as we've seen the growth. I'm here this evening to support the VATRE as well as the bond, to support that growth, to continue to fuel the economy that we've all enjoyed over the last 10 years. Please, I'm asking you all, as attendees of this meeting, to take five this November 3rd and vote for all five propositions as a yes vote for both the VATRE and the bond. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Anybody else with a question or comment? Without going into too much detail, just to make Council feel a little bit better, Doc, would you, would you cover a, a little bit of the template on what you're going to do if, if a child feels ill or, or, you know, what, what's the protocol going to be? Just so we have a feel for it.
So Tanya and our 1,700 other classroom teachers, they are in the process of being trained in the protocols, and we have several, several different layers. We're going to ask our staff to self-screen every morning, taking the temperatures, just making sure that everybody feels good and no COVID. And guys, the, the symptoms for COVID are growing every day. We're getting new symptoms every time we turn around, either from the state or the counties for COVID symptoms. We're also going to ask parents to sign a, to sign a, just kind of a promise to us that, that they will not send their kids to school sick, and that they will check their kids every morning, that they don't have any COVID symptoms, to be able to do so. So we're going to come into school, and we are going to, we're going to wear masks. We're going to socially distance everywhere we, we can. But one of the things that we're really talking to teachers and campus staff is, we really, really got to pay attention to how our kids are every morning, every, every period, every hour, to make sure that we're noticing kids that if they have, if they have any kind of symptoms, that would be COVID. We're actually going to have two different parts of our school set up for our school nurse. We're going to have, it's just kind of like a, it's kind of going to be like a doctor's office, your pediatrician's office. We're going to have a well baby checkup place and a, and a sick baby checkup place. Where any kids that are showing COVID symptoms, anything are going to be taken to a special area of the school to make sure that we can assess them. Kids who've just come to us every day to take their medication, you know, if they hurt their arm on the playground, anything like that, we'll have a special place for them that's free of any kind of COVID symptoms. And so then it starts a process, and what, and what the mayor was talking about, kind of what our template is, it starts a process. If we have a child that has COVID, true COVID symptoms, then we start to contact trace who, who is around him and what settings they were in. If, if they are in a classroom, we know specifically who was in that classroom around them. If we have a child who tests positive, well, excuse me, if we have anyone in the building who tests positive for COVID, whether it be an adult or a child, we are mandated now by the state of Texas Health Department, we inform every person associated with that campus. So every, so it's not just the classroom. Every student, every family will get a letter from me saying that a student at whatever, whatever campus has tested positive, and every, every adult, every staff member of the campus will also get a note from me saying that we're going to do that. So we take, we take the, the student, where we, we contact trace where that student has been. We make sure that they have been following the right procedures. They're wearing the mask. We're socially distancing. If we can verify that, then we can make sure that that kid goes and, and does his days in, in quarantine, as they're supposed to, whether it be a kid or an adult does the 14 days of quarantine, and then we just, we can monitor the rest. If we do know that they have been in close contact with a kid, if they not had a mask on, if they had, if, if they haven't followed the, the thing, then we may have to quarantine an entire classroom. And that goes, Mayor, that goes on to quarantine in a classroom, quarantining an entire hallway, quarantining an entire school. I mean, we have set processes set up where if we had to do a closure of an entire school, and that's, and that's, that, that's really the thing that I, I really, really want to. That's why we're harping so much on, on following the processes, following the procedures. No one coming to school with any kind of symptoms. We don't want to lose any more time having to close down, whether it be as, as a school district like we had to do after spring break, or even a campuses. You know, if one campus is, has to close down, we're not going to enclose, we're not going to close the, the entire district. We're just going to, we're going to take them on case by case basis. But we're really, really trying to harp on people just taking responsibility for themselves, parents taking responsibility for their kids, and all of us just kind of working together to do our best to get that, you know, we're, we've got, we've got, right now, we've got seven staff members quarantined right now, you know, where the school's not even started yet, you know, because, you know, it, it just, they've been around people who had it, and, and they had to quarantine themselves. And so we're, we're dealing with that every day. Everybody's recovered, so that, that's great, and we expect them to do so. I mean, we're going to, we're going to have kids that are going to contract COVID. We know that. We're going to have staff members who knew that. We're just trying to do our best to mitigate it as much as we can and follow that process.
Thank you, sir. I was just trying to make, well, hearing it straight from you that there is a process in, in effect, and, and it's not just shoot from the hip. It's been, it's been well thought out, and I think we should all feel very comfortable, those of us who have made the decision to have our kids, our grandkids, actually show up on the 14th of September for in-person classes, that the school district has done everything they can possibly do to be prepared as, as well as they can.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, yeah, this is Earl.
Go ahead.
Do y'all have the five-minute test, something that you can get a, a quick response on the test?
No, sir. We are not a testing site. What we're, what we're asking parents to do will be one of the identified sites. If we have the, if we see symptoms, we're sending the kid home. We're asking the parents to come immediately, pick them up. We, we'll, the nurse will explain to them that we, we see COVID symptoms, and then they will go and do that. Until the kid is either proven to have or have, or not have COVID, the kid will stay home. And, and the beauty of what we're doing is, if a kid does have to stay home because of, either they have the symptoms or they've tested positive, we already have the remote system of learning set up where the kid won't have to miss a lot of school if, if they're up the 14th. If they have to miss three or four days just because they're sick, we'll just treat it as a regular school absence. But if they truly do get tested for COVID, or if they continue having the symptoms, we will switch that kid to remote learning so they won't, depending on how bad they feel, they, they won't, they won't miss instruction if they can do it.
Anybody else have a question or comment? Dr. Warren, thank you very much for, for being here. We really appreciate, appreciate you being here, number one, the time that you're spending with us, and, and thanks for the update on the VATRE and the bond. And, and we will, we'll make sure that, that everybody knows that, that's coming up.
Well, we appreciate you guys, and, and the relationship between the school district and the city of Hazlet has always been special. As, as a resident of Hazlet, we, we, we think it's very special, my wife and I. And if there's anything that, any kind of support you need from us, anything that we can do, just, just call. We're, we're in a very weird time in our lives, and as much as we can support each other, we need to. So we appreciate you guys. We appreciate your leadership in the community.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to number five, items of community interest. Should have just one single item. 5A, city offices and the Hazlet Public Library will be closed on Monday, September 7th, 2020, in observance of Labor Day holiday. Next item is the monthly reports. All the departments have reported. Anybody with a question or comment about any of the monthly reports? Hearing none, let's go on to seven, staff reports to update on active items, projects, and event recaps.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, sorry. On the engineering report, there was, let me see if I can find it. The very last item was, the information was truncated in the box. I couldn't see what it all said. It's about 156, or, yeah, 156 plans. They said, Tech Dot is exploring the idea of applying A, and the rest of it, I can't read.
Yes, I apologize for that. When I resized the cells, it didn't, it didn't pick, pick up that I wrapped those. Tech Dot is looking at applying a fog seal to FM 156 next year to basically hold it over until they can get to it in 2025. I met with the guy out there who was measuring to see if there are room for turn lanes onto Odessa and Schoolhouse Road. So that, that's what that line item said. So they're, they're looking at it. It's not a guaranteed project yet, but I can at least report that they are, are looking at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else with anything on monthly reports? Okay, on to number seven, staff reports to update on active items, projects, and event recap. 7A, update on the coronavirus COVID-19 issues.
I will be Chief May.
All right. Well, today was a, a new day for us. We begin what we call Phase Two of opening Hazlet. Some employees will still continue to use the telework as needed. This is considered a soft opening that will allow limited access and facility usage by the public. City Hall, Court Window, and Library will be open to the public only from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. This will allow us to serve the public, but limit our exposures by 40% using this timeframe. At any point in time that Mr. Quinn has enough complaints, then we will come back and revisit it. But as of today, day one, I believe Katrina reported we had three people enter the building. So day one is a hit so far. The public can enter our buildings provided that they follow our rules of screening, temperature check, wearing a mask, and signing the contact tracing log. City Hall and the library have a table located directly inside the front door. It'll have some information on it on what to do. Mr. Quinn and I again witnessed FedEx coming in today, and I said, let's see how this works. And so the FedEx guy came in. He stops at the table. Jared from behind his plastic screen says, are you just dropping off? He says, yes, I am. He said, put it on the table. Thank you. And the guy turned around and walked out. And so that's the intent, to try to limit our exposure, keeping our people away from other people, even from our own people. So one of the other things that we also have done to try to make all of our staffers feel as protected as we can, I personally talked to the Public Health Director last week and was asking him about protective equipment. And he said that if we wear a face shield and a medical mask, that that gives us the highest level of protection, and that if you were sitting in a room with somebody that, in a one-on-one meeting, and they ended up being COVID, that that would give you the protection you need to not be in exposure. So we've issued that face shield and mask to all employees. I, I would say that there are extra masks, so if for some reason, Council, you needed to come to City Hall and you felt the need to be better protected, just ask Katrina for one of the face shields and you could do that. So. Let's see here. So again, even though we've opened doors to the public, we're, we're discouraging, you know, appointment, or, you know, we're scheduling, just the discouraging meetings. If somebody did come in and want to talk to Mr. Quinn, or Walt, or Thad, or Travis, then they would be given their phone number, and they can work out whatever details they want to do. They can do a one-on-one meeting if they both agree. Any meeting greater than one-on-one has to have Mr. Quinn's approval again, so we can make sure that they understand the rules of engagement. Where are we going to hold it? Is it socially distanced? And, you know, we can clean up afterwards. So that's where we stand today with, with City Hall. The library will open their doors from 10:00 to 3:00 again, Monday through Friday. They will, there will be three out of six computers available for use. No in-house programs, only virtual ones. Tables and chairs will be socially distanced apart, and they will continue curbside pickup. Barbara, anything you'd like to add about how your day went? Any? I'll take that as note. All right. She's still doing, doing books. All right.
Microphone on.
I think we had 13 people come into the library, and 27 still did curbside today.
Perfect. Okeydoke. Municipal court, again, the court window will be open from the 10:00 to 3:00 to pay the tickets. They have the August, August 25th court date will be via Zoom. Katie was able to get the, the judge and herself and other employees trained on, on how to do the Zoom court. Public Works, no changes there. They're still doing the staggered start-stop times. No changes to parks regarding equipment use. HSA will begin recreational baseball starting September 12th through October 24th. Uh, HSA will begin recreational baseball starting September twelfth through October twenty-fourth. Um, we, we had kind of been talking all along that, uh, if the kids in school weren't playing sports, then we didn't support it. But now that we know that the kids are going back to playing sports, uh, then, uh, and the governor says they can do it, then, then they're going to start. Um, Sean Ryan, the president, has been great to work with. Uh, I've expressed the, the mayor's concerns, the city manager's concerns, admire concerns about a lot of people at one place. Um, what they're going to do is, uh, at this point, all games to be played at Fire Station Fields until bathrooms at Nance are reopened. And I don't see that in the future because our staff will have to clean them frequently. And that will result in a lot of overtime and extra hours worked. Um, so they're fine with this at this point. They're going to just, uh, play games at Fire Station Fields. Um, they asked for some extra porta potties, so got with Travis and David. Uh, they're going to also provide hand sanitizer stations and they will be cleaned on a regular basis. Uh, the last thing about it is not all age divisions will play it once. So what they're going to do is they're, they've shortened the game times and they will just play a double header. So just play each, each team twice. And then there will be a break between that set of games and the next set of games. So that'll give them time to clean the dugouts, hopefully get some of the people out of the way before the next group of, uh, teams come into play. So, uh, again, I think they're doing a good job of trying to, to make it as safe as they can for the, for the kids. Um, the governor extended the Virtual Opens Meeting Act another thirty days and I will let Rob explain that one.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, am I coming through okay? I didn't test my mic earlier, so. Okay, great. Thank you. Damn. Uh, that's correct. On Saturday, August eighth, the governor extended the statewide disaster declaration for another thirty days. And that automatically extends his suspension of the Open Meetings Act, uh, provisions which allow you to continue to meet through video conference meetings. Um, that will extend through around September seventh, which y'all will probably should ring a bell. Our, our regular meeting would be scheduled for the seventh, uh, which is a holiday. So our meeting is on Tuesday, the eighth. So the issue with that is if the mayor, if the governor keeps to his current schedule, uh, he may not act again till the Saturday before our Tuesday meeting and we will have posted on the Friday before. Um, I cannot imagine that the governor does not act to further extend everything. But, you know, we're, by the time we post, we may or may not have his actual action. Um, so if we're concerned about that, um, I can give Diana some language for posting that agenda. Um, basically some alternate language. So I, my suggestion, if we're concerned about it, like I said, I, I don't imagine that happening. But, um, what we could do is post for a, a video conference meeting and stick some alternate language in there that basically says if the, uh, if the declaration of disaster is not further extended by the governor, then this meeting would occur in person at City Hall at seven PM. At, as an alternate, just in case that doesn't happen. So we don't have to double post the meeting or, um, or worry about, worry about it if, if that was to occur. And I'll stop there and see if I field any questions y'all have or if we need to discuss that in more detail or.
Anybody have any questions for Kurt or Rob? I would like to throw something out that came out of the, uh, the judge, uh, the judge's weekly meeting last week and, and it was amplified last week from the week before. The Tarrant County Health Director, Vinnie Tenah, explained a little bit about, uh, how the recovery statistic that Jim has been sharing with us. I mean, Kurt, Kurt gives the numbers to Jim, Jim shares them with us. And, and I just want everybody to understand, you, you get a positive, you get a recovery and then thank God we've been zero in the deaths and maybe we'll stay lucky and not have any deaths in that. So, so we're right now, as of the numbers today, we're twenty-seven positives and twenty-six recoveries. So the question came up to Vinnie that day, how, how are, are those recoveries, uh, tabulated? And for those of you who've been watching the news, uh, Colleyville plays its own game. Uh, they, they automatically in Colleyville, if you've, if you've been a positive for fourteen days, you're recovered. Uh, Vinnie talked about countywide and what we're trying to use across the state is the first and most accurate would probably be if you had two negative tests after you were positive, you would be considered negative and there was no timeframe involved in that. If you didn't have the two negative tests, the county's assuming after thirty days, you, you ought to be in one of two columns and, and most of us are going into the recovered column. And that's, that's where we would like for us to be. So Kurt, do you have anything that you would add to that? That's, that's what I took. Jim, you probably were in on that too. Uh, but I just wanted to share that. So right now we're, we're one positive case that has not recovered in Haslett. So great news for us at this point in time. I just wanted to share how that worked out. Anybody else with a question or a comment about the coronavirus? Hearing none, listen to us. Go ahead.
Haslet residents are resilient.
Yes. Uh, seven B, MedStar rate revision. Kurt?
All right, I gotta click over here to my agenda. Okay, uh, I mean, I think this is pretty straightforward. The, the main objective out of this, when, when we were at the last MedStar Miami Sub Board meeting, um, they knew that they were going to have, uh, a deficit budget. And so as they presented, uh, to the board, uh, two options to try to have a balanced budget this coming year. One was to be, have to cut some services, which nobody wants in public health or public safety. Um, and so the other one was, uh, they were going to cancel a few programs that didn't impact treatment transport. Uh, but being able to raise the rates, uh, since they haven't raised them since two thousand and ten, um, to try and generate some revenue, which was about the one point two million dollars. Uh, it actually generates more than that, but that's what they anticipate will be paid. Uh, because again, as people lose their jobs, they don't have the insurance, then they're still not paying. So that's what they do believe they will, will, uh, net. Hang on a second. Sorry, Diana, I was trying to read my agenda. Um, so the, uh, so, uh, again, that, that's what they're doing to raise the rates. Uh, I, I support it as fire chiefs, uh, as a fire chief because again, there's no cost to the city for the ambulance service. So it is solely, you know, paid for by the user. Um, again, we are pretty low in the number of EMS calls that in our city. Um, so again, I don't think it's a great impact, uh, to our community. But this is a perfect time to remind everyone that MedStar has the Star Saver subscription program uh, for sixty-nine dollars a year for your whole family. You're covered. What they don't get from insurance, they're not coming after you. So just a, just another reminder and a plug of a way to protect you and your family through their Star Saver program. Um, so, uh, I'm just going to stop there and answer any questions. What, what they wanted was this to be a discussion item. Uh, they wanted to be fully transparent, that this is what they are looking at doing. Uh, they're waiting for us to get feedback from all the cities, uh, at the next board meeting, then they would make their decision. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to write them down and pass them on to, uh, the CEO of MedStar.
So this is the mayor. So it's not an action item, requires no action on our part. But if anybody has any feedback for Kurt to take back, I'm sure he'd, uh, he'd love to hear that. But this is kind of a, just an informational thing for us. This is the, the changes that they're proposing and they're making us aware of them. I guess everybody's satisfied with that and, and your presentation, Kurt. Good job.
All right, thank you.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On, uh, page, um, one nineteen, which shows the charts of all the different cities. Uh, are those? Are, uh, are you there, Kurt?
Well, I'm, I'm going to flip over to the page. Uh, so all I have in front of me, uh, Mr. Billborn is, is their note and the, uh, the chart of the, of the city. So I'm on that page. What you got?
Okay, and so when it says Addison, Arlington, are those, um, ambulance services that are part of, of the city, the municipality's service? Is that what that represents?
Yeah, so some of those, most of those, um, Addison, Dallas, Denton, Grapevine and Irving are, are, are all fire department-based, uh, ambulances. Only Arlington is, is like MedStar where it's almost a third city service. But the other one essentially the fire department runs the ambulance. So.
And so, so MedStar is comparing these rates to, um, ways that other municipalities are, are charging their residents. It's not that MedStar charges those cities.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else with a question or comment? Okay, let's go to seven C, the Alliance Texas Haslett Accessibility Improvement Project, ATHAIP, July twenty twenty update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. As Mr. Quinn has mentioned many times, this is a complex project. I'm going to skip over those items in the report that are complete and stick to those that are still ongoing. Uh, we've got fewer items, but they seem to be more urgent, uh, as we get down to the wire. Uh, if you'll turn to project finance update, tax increment financing district. Patty and Associates and I will be at the Commissioner's Court, uh, tomorrow at ten AM. Uh, face masks on, uh, hand sanitizer, six-foot stick to keep everybody away. But we will be there tomorrow briefing the commissioners on reinvestment zone one to, uh, again, this is a two-step process. We brief them first and then it comes back for consideration at the next meeting. Um, so far, Lisa McMillan, she's my contact over there, says, uh, she hasn't received any negative feedback. So, um, there'll be more on that at our next update. Uh, I can send something out to Mr. Quinn once that occurs tomorrow, if we've got any feedback. So again, that's processing, uh, and advancing. Uh, we're still working on the, uh, solution for the PED. The solution's there. We will not impact the city budget. Tarrant County basically will take the pay requests from TechStop. Tarrant County will process that directly. So the, uh, the project end date, that engineering blackout period we, uh, paid for in the interim will not hit your budget again. They'll pay that directly. TechStop will be able to reimburse Federal Highway and we'll continue forward with that. Uh, engineering plans, Kimmy Horn is working on the hundred percent, uh, comments from, this is TechStop Austin. This is not local. Uh, this is now moved down to Austin. They have accepted those hundred percent plans and they're now commenting on them. So we don't expect any issues there. But again, that is something that is ongoing. Uh, the construction advanced funding agreement, we'll talk about that in its own item later. Um, this, when this report was filed, we didn't have the other item entered into the system. That's actually why that ended up on there twice. Diana took a little, uh, heat for that one. Uh, but she had entered that item manually because I didn't have all the backup documentation. And then when I entered it, Mr. Quinn approved it, it automatically updated. So that's why we have ten I and ten M on there. So we'll deal with the AFA and the later item. Right-of-way acquisition, I attended, uh, virtually the Fort Worth City Council meeting, August eleventh. They did approve that item. So the Fort Worth parcels, um, we're just, I'm working with Roger Venables. Those are approved. So we have Fort Worth, uh, in hand, if you will. It's just a matter of, uh, crossing Ts and dotting Is to get those executed. Uh, the rest of right-of-way, we will discuss later in this meeting. Um, it is advancing per the management plan, so we're still on schedule. Uh, we just have some things to discuss later, uh, in this meeting. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for that?
Thanks for all the clearly written updates.
Okay, hearing that, we'll go on to discussion items eight A. Discuss and provide staff direction on developing a water tower advertising policy for current and future water towers.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this, uh, originated from a request from an Eaton High School Vice Principal on the feasibility of painting the Eaton Eagles logo on the Haslett Water Tower. Uh, looking for a policy, we could not find one. Uh, the only such policy came when the, uh, tower was built back in two thousand and twelve, that landmark to put their logo on the backside of the tower. If they painted Haslett towards the, uh, front side where I thirty-five faced, uh, that agreement lasted for ten years. Uh, so it would have had, would have been expired, uh, in twenty twelve. Uh, so the fir- first item is, uh, I, I included a picture, kind of a Google three D image of, of the, of the tower uh, from Eaton High School. If you were to sit on the roof, it's about four miles away. Uh, there's, it is in line of sight to the school. Uh, it's kind of small when you, when you look at it. There's two Fort Worth water towers, uh, located to the, uh, west of Eaton. But Fort Worth does not allow logos on their tower, uh, because they have so many school districts, uh, within their city. And when I talked to Fort Worth, they said it was an unwritten policy, but it was definitely a discussion item among staff there. Uh, the other water tower that's coming up in the city will be only two and a half miles away from Eaton High School. But it will also be directly across the street from a planned Northwest ISB High School. So that probably wouldn't be the greatest for in-district arrivals if that tower were to show an Eaton logo. Uh, so just a quick background on, on water towers, the process of painting requires, uh, another tower to be on the system. You have to completely empty one water tower to be able to paint it because you have to paint the inside and the outside at the same time. Uh, the paint is very specialized, has to be able to handle human environments on the inside and harsh conditions, uh, such as the wind and rain that we got last night on the outside. Uh, water towers are repainted every twenty to twenty-five years. Current water tower has been in place for eighteen years. It is kind of a capital, uh, cost of capital item, but it's usually absorbed in the water rate structure for the city. So it's not necessarily a specialized, uh, capital project. So right now we're seeking direction, uh, if council wants to decide on an advertisement policy, uh, whether it just be strictly limited to schools, uh, whether it be city logos only, uh, both on the existing water tower that will need to be repainted within the next five to ten years, uh, and also the new water tower. Uh, that's going to depend on where that Haslett city logo is placed, whether it faces, um, downtown basically, or whether it faces the, uh, elementary school or future high school, uh, where the, where the actual word Haslett goes. Uh, right now, the plans, uh, that I have in house just say place city logo at direction of city. So that's, uh, what we're looking for and I will open it up to discussion and questions.
Comments?
What's the cost of painting?
It, it varies and it, it really varies on the, on the, uh, the condition of the tank. Uh, when Landmark put up the tank over there off of, off of, uh, Harman Road, they really put forward their best foot because they wanted to use it as advertising, uh, for their company. So it's actually in really good condition. So I anticipate that cost being between two and three hundred thousand dollars. I looked up recently, Halton City had one repainted for four hundred thousand dollars. Plano had a really old tank repainted for one point two million. So it, it's all over the place, uh, until you actually get somebody in there that can analyze the, the amount of repair that's going to be needed. It, it could be as simple as strip and repaint. It could be more complicated as re-weld. Uh, our water tower is a pretty good condition. I, I, I've only noticed two rust spots on the outside, which really, which really shows how well that was constructed to be up there for eighteen years. It's only two rust spots. Uh, but I could give you a range of two hundred thousand to one point two million. We just won't know until we get up there and inspect it.
Travis, you're saying that we can't paint the outside? I'm just, this is more of just a general question. We can't paint the outside unless we paint the inside at the same time?
I mean, in theory you could, but you'd be wasting your outside paint. I mean, in theory, you could, but you'd be wasting your outside paint job because the inside would have to be done, and those two paints act in tandem with each other. So the two paints react because the steel expands and contracts with the water that comes in it and also with the temperature on the inside and the outside. So it's possible to repaint the outside of the tower, but you're kind of wasting your inside paint at that point.
But you would recommend, just to summarize what I thought I read, you would recommend not, not putting any kind of logo on the outside until we repainted the outside, at least the outside of our existing water tank. Is that right?
Correct. Putting a logo today is a short-term venture, considering that that tower will probably need to be repainted within the next five to 10 years.
When, when the district contacted the city, did they offer up any kind of monetary fund to help finance painting that? Or were they just giving us an idea on what to put on, on the side of it?
The email that I got was from a Vice Principal of Eaton High School. I'm not sure if it ever got run up the flagpole any higher. It sounded like he was kicking the tires, trying to get some support in this time of COVID, trying to get people excited about going back to school, and was asking about the process of getting a logo up there.
Well, I, I, I'll just throw out that the Eaton High School has a Haslet mailing address, but it's in the city of Fort Worth. The new high school, when it is built in the next six to eight years, will be in the city of Haslet, and obviously, the closest one will be the new water tower. The one that's closer to 35, it seems to be, I don't know. The water tower is in Haslet, but I'm not sure that we need to worry about developing a policy about putting logos on water tanks that, you know, when the people that want to be on the tank aren't even in the city. I don't know, Tanya, am I getting way off track here? I mean, if it were in the city, I'd have a little bit more of an open mind. I don't mean to pigeonhole you, but, but.
No, I agree. I don't, I don't like that, well, personal, I don't like that our boards at school, our marquees, were allowed to be, people could pay for advertising. So I'm driving to school, and I see a dentist, or I'm driving to school, and I see a real estate. I don't think they should mix. Now, I would be all for Haslet logos only, not anti-Eaton at all. But I think Haslet logos, I think Fort Worth has a good unwritten policy, and so that would be my, what I would want to go for.
And I wasn't trying to direct an outcome other than just to say, do we need to have Jim and staff work on a policy? Or, or, you know, do we wait until we get the next request? Or, you know, just say, sorry, right now, we can't do anything because we don't, we'd have to take, you know, we can't empty that tower to paint it, period. So it's just not feasible to do it right now. That's an easy answer, I would think. But I mean, if the council thinks we need a policy, then, then we can certainly march on that road, too.
Tim, back when we built that water tower, we allowed Landmark to put their name on it because they gave us a price break in the, in the construction or the painting of it. I'm not sure which, but they gave us a price break. And so we were glad to do it because it's right there at their office. And, you know, they've gotten a lot of use out of it. But going forward, you know, I don't see any logos other than Haslet on any of the water towers. And certainly on the new one, I think the only one that I would even consider would be whatever the new Haslet High School logo is. We might consider it at that time, you know, if we know what their logo might be at the time. But I think we can just leave it as, you don't have a policy because we can't paint it, anything on there temporary. That'd be a waste of money. And it would be, you know, we'll have the new high school by the time we get around to painting that other one. So I would say, thanks for asking, but we're just not ready to consider that.
And Travis and Jim, this is the mayor. I wasn't trying to cut either or both of you off at the knees on this. I just didn't want us to expend energy on a policy that council might not want us to, that we might not need at this point in time. Jim, do you have any thoughts, one way or the other? Mic, microphone, Jim.
Mayor, I don't think we need a policy. We just need to be able to tell the Eaton High School representative they were not at this time. And, and that's why all we wanted out of this was, hey, not at this time. We don't have policy, but the unwritten rule is that we will only consider a Haslet logo at this time. That way, we close the loop. He can go tell his principal or whoever the building superintendent is that, that no, that Hassle is not going to reconsider putting an Eaton Eagle logo on its water.
So is council good with, with that as, as no policy at this time? And just respond in a, in a polite way to the Eaton Vice Principal that we're going to reserve that for Haslet?
I, I don't think we should say we're going to reserve it for Hassle. I think we should say, I think you're talking about the Haslet logo, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we're reserving it, but the Haslet City logo, I agree.
And Trish, I'm not being critical, but you sound like you're in a garbage can when you're talking. So we need to maybe get with Diana later and figure out, because you're not as, you're not near as clear tonight as you have been in the past when, when you're talking. Okay, if we're good with that.
Let me turn on my mic, maybe. Is that better? Is that better?
It, it's a little bit, but you're, you're, you're not as clear as everybody else is, for whatever reason. I, just, just an FYI.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, on to eight B, West Nile Virus Season and Status.
I believe you were given a report along with your packet, and Travis can give you any kind of information, either regarding. I did, I think, Mayor, we heard on the judge's call that we have a heightened increase of West Nile virus cases, testing points, all over Northeast Tarrant County.
Very definitely. The, the county health director was as concerned, if not more concerned, last week with the status of West Nile in Northeast Tarrant County than he was COVID-19.
Yeah, I asked, I asked for this agenda item. Thank you for, Jim, for putting that report on there. I just remembered the, you know, I recall an emergency meeting we had to have one night to authorize aerial spraying of the city when this got bad a few years ago. And I know they're, they sprayed in, appears they sprayed in Ashmore Farms. I can understand why they would have a problem back there with that, between them and the railroad tracks. But, you know, I guess if other, other traps test positive, when, you know, maybe they're considering aerial spraying or not. I, I know, I, I can't go out on my, my back porch in the evening or the morning without getting bitten immediately. They just attract to me some, somehow. So I was bad enough sheltering a place from COVID, but now you can't even go out on your back porch without risking West Nile, you know, another damn virus.
Well, if memory serves you correctly, after we had that emergency meeting, that was before Jim arrived, so that's been, you know, probably six-plus years ago. Rob helped us develop a policy such that when we get those positives, that there, there is a procedure in place where we, as a council, don't have to take any further action. We've already taken that action, that if this comes up, they have the authority, and they're, you know, they just draw on, on a budget to, to take care of that. Jim, do you want to amplify on that at all?
Yes, it's an automatic policy. Once we get a positive test, I think we go a half mile or a mile. In fact, I think the health director said we should go a little further than what we should, just to make sure we get everything. Yeah, we do have an automatic policy that we go and spray when we have a positive test with a certain mile, half-mile radius.
And anybody else have any questions or comments about this item?
Mayor, this is Travis. I just want to just, there was a question when this email went out about where the traps are and what they actually do. So I did want to.
Travis, your mic cut out.
Okay, okay. There are three traps in the city. One is behind Ashmore Farms. One is in Community Park, and one is by the Church of Christ on Schoolhouse Road. These traps aren't necessarily for mosquito population control, but they are there to capture mosquitoes to test for West Nile virus. So if you, if you see the word trap, it's not necessarily population. It's just a test for the virus. So that's that, I just wanted to pass that information along, that there are three traps within the city.
Okay, anybody else with a question? Okay, let's go on to number nine, the consent agenda. We have one item, nine A, approve the August 3rd, 2020 regular city council meeting minutes. Any comments, corrections anybody wants to make? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Harold. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tim, I'll second.
Mayor Pro Tim has a second. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote real quick. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Ten A, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on the final phase, final plat, excuse me, of Phase One of the Watercrest subdivision. The proposed Phase One final plat consists of 145 residential lots and six open space common area lots on 108.871 acres of land in the E. Hopkins Survey Abstract Number 646, the GM's Lewis Survey Abstract Number 966, and the JW Goodwin Survey Abstract Number 611 in the city of Haslet, Tarrant County, Texas, and located on the south side of Blue Mound, Blue Mound Road, approximately 3,000 feet east of FM 156, and is in a residential planned development, RPD, ordinance 002 2020 District. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the final plat of Phase One for the Watercrest project. The proposed final plat meets all the requirements of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Haslet and the Planned Development District in which the property is located. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July 27th, 2020, and recommends approval, and the staff also recommends approval.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the final plat of Phase One of the Watercrest subdivision? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation from PNC. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the final plat as presented, then.
This is Tanya Morrow. I move we approve the Phase One final plat of the Watercrest subdivision as presented.
Is there a second?
I have one second.
Hey, Hillborn seconds. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Ten B, discuss, consider, and act upon a community facilities agreement for Watercrest onsite improvements.
Good evening again. This is the community facilities agreement associated with the plat that was just approved. Developers wanting to move really quickly on this, mobilize existing contractors on site that were doing the Regal Ridge property next door. They're the same contractors. This is a standard CFA agreement, has been through legal review, and is presented to you for consideration. Thank you.
Any questions of Travis of the community facility agreement? Anyone want to make a motion, then?
This is Councilmember Hillborn. I move that we approve the community facility, community facilities agreement for Watercrest onsite improvements.
Is there a second?
This is Jessica Clark, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Ten C, continued from August 3rd, 2020, discuss, consider, and act to approve an administrative policy regarding the use of facial coverings for individuals in city buildings. Is this going to be Diana?
Yes, Mayor and Council, at our last meeting, this item was continued as the policy that was attached had not been updated. And so the packet this time included the corrected attachment. And this policy just further outlines the rules for face masks, not only to, for employees, but anyone that comes on to public, into public facilities, making it very clear so that everyone is safe.
It reflects the governor's policy on masks.
Anyone have any questions or comments regarding the face mask policy?
This is Tanya Morrow. I just want to say it's very thorough, and I feel that it's very well-written, and I would feel safe if I was going into work or coming up to the city. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Unless, so I also want to make a comment?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve the administrative policy regarding the use of facial coverings for individuals in city buildings.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is your warning.
Okay, Hillborn seconds, I heard that. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Ten D, discuss, consider, and act to determine a proposed tax rate for the fiscal year October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2021, and to schedule a required public hearing for the tax rate if required. Marcy?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for us to set a tax rate. There will be a hearing required if, unless we go below the no new revenue rate. So this would be for you to consider to set a hearing date if it's needed based on an item later on in the agenda to determine if we need a tax rate hearing. One of the things on this item, I did want to point out, the original report to council has a date for the hearing to be September 8. The information I was reviewing when I put this on the calendar, I missed, I guess, either an update or an additional paragraph that says that you should not have your tax rate vote more than seven days past the hearing. So in looking at everything on the calendar again, I would ask that you consider the date of September 21st for this hearing. You would then, at the conclusion of the hearing, be able to vote on the tax rate. And so just wanting to let you know, the recommendation for the motion would be to actually set the date for September 21st.
So if, if in the motion, if we're not sure at this point in time what we want to do, if in the motion tonight, we say to set a tax rate not to exceed 3.5%, and the hearing to be conducted on September 21st, would that satisfy everything that we're supposed to do this evening? would that satisfy everything that we're supposed to do this evening?
Well, you have, let's see. Yes, I believe, I believe that. You set a proposed rate, and you'd set an act for the hearing.
Any, any questions or comments for Marcy, Jim, me, anybody about the tax rate?
Okay.
I have a question. So, okay, so if I'm understanding Marcy's, her summary, we can, we can, we can choose a tax rate this evening, and when we have our, the night that we vote, we can adopt that tax rate or a lower tax rate. So in other words, tonight, if, if there's still any question about where we should go with the tax rate, then we, we could, we could adopt the voter approval rate, no new tax revenue rate, or just any rate that we, that we wanted to say. And then at our, when we vote for it, we can actually reduce that if we wanted to. I just want to make sure I understand. I'm not already hitting that. I just want to make sure I understand. That is another option that we have to go tonight.
This is Mayor Pro Tim. I recommend we just put in the voter-approved tax rate in the blank there. If necessary, we can always lower it next time, but we just can't raise it. So I guess, does it have to be less than the voter-approved tax rate? Like 1, 1/10,000th or of a cent, or can we just put in a voter-approved tax rate? It'd be good.
I think you need to put in 3.4997 or something like that.
I'll let, this is Rob. I'll let Marcy confirm this, but I think generally you, you go down, like, like Jim was saying, like, go out to the fourth or fifth decimal place and come down like one number from, so you're not at that exact rate.
That's correct. That's what we usually do, just, just so that there's never a question.
Yeah, so that'd be 249972. So that's my recommendation.
You want to make that in a, in a motion?
Sure. I find that, okay. I move to approve a re, a proposed tax rate of, let me go back up here, .249973 per hundred for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and set a tax rate hearing for September 20, I don't remember. Somebody help me.
21st.
21st, 2020 for the regular, at the regular scheduled council meeting.
And just to be clear, this is Rob. I think, Mayor Pro Tim, I think you read the exact voter approval tax rate with a 3 on the end.
Yes.
And I think you intended to have that as a 2, based on your previous comment.
I'm sorry, it should be .249972 per hundred.
Thanks for the catch, Rob. Is there a second to that? Okay, no one wants to second that motion, is that correct?
This is Jessica Clark.
I'm sorry. There, there were two people talking at once. I just didn't understand.
I was going, this Jessica Clark, I was going to second.
Okay, Jessica Clark seconds. And any further discussion?
I, I want, I'd like to discuss this because this is a tax increase. Just so we know, just so we know what we're talking about here, a voter approval tax rate is higher than the no new revenue tax rate. And we had discussed earlier that we did not feel comfortable getting that because of the, the pandemic. Now, if we approve this tonight, we can still come down on the night of the 21st and vote for the normal revenue rate, but we're not doing that with this right here. Come on, correct me.
I, I thought that was what we were doing. Rob, is that not what we're doing? It, it, it's what I was trying to say in the beginning. We're, we're setting a max just under the 3.5% increase that we're authorized, and, and we're saying that we won't exceed that, and we, we got a number less than that. And then we have between now and the 21st to discuss and come up with a final tax rate. But for meeting purposes and for paperwork purposes for Marcy, we need to come up with at least a not to exceed number, which is what I think we've done tonight. Rob?
Mayor, that, that is correct, except the only thing I can't comment on was Ms. Hillborn's original comment about whether that voter approval tax rate, everything you said, Mayor, about being able to come down from that is correct. If, if the council chooses to, what I can't answer, I guess I'd pitch to Marcy, is at the voter approval tax rate, is that an increase as Councilwoman Hillborn was just referring to?
Well, the no new revenue tax rate is called that to not necessarily keep the rate the same, but to basically let you know that you'll be getting the same amount of revenue from the tax rate based on the current valuation. We have a little bit of an anomaly this year because of, we had a lot of protests last year, and we had a lot of new construction, and we, we've had a, just an anomaly. Normally that no new revenue rate is higher than it, than it is. There's usually more space in between. So you add in the lack of being able to go up 8% that the legislature put on us to just only be able to go up to 3.5, plus all the protests we have. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have the worksheet loaded, but it was attached to your packet that showed the effect on, you know, a house and $500,000 home and, and what their tax rate would be. So in, in some instance, to the individual taxpayer, it is going to look like possibly a decrease at the no new revenue rate. I calculated the numbers on the no new revenue rate, and it does decrease our projections from what we had in the budget. So because of the way the new construction was valued and the estimate I put in the budget, our revenue, no new rep, or revenues would be, let's see, 2.283, $2,283,000 for the sales tax piece, or the property tax piece. And hang on just one second. And the number that we had estimated, including the new construction, was 2.6. Now, in dollar-wise, what we budgeted last year was 2.1 million. So at the 2.283, the dollars are increased slightly because of the new construction. So at the no new revenue, no new revenue rate, the dollars are, are what's really being considered there rather than the rate. So as Councilmember Hillborn says, it is a, a tax increase. I believe she's correct.
I did it wrong. I did it wrong.
I'm sorry, this is Mayor Pro. I've been, I've been monitoring the, the newspapers and seeing what other cities are doing. They're also, most of them are doing what we're doing at least, to, for, call that hearing, and then proposing a tax rate at the, at the voter-approved rate. Some cities I saw are going, a few cities are going above that. They're going to have to have an election. And a few cities are actually, there was one city today, I forgot what city it was, was actually lower than the no new revenue rate. It's like, wow, they must have something going on, and I'm not sure what. But I appreciated Jim's email this week that pointed out that 79% of our revenue comes from commercial and industrial sources, and so that would only leave 21% on the residents. So and I, I said in the last couple of meetings, I'm not so sure I want to approve more, greater tax burden on the residents. But actually, you know, this actually cuts the tax rate by quite a bit, although taxes go up, yes. Assuming, you know, your resident appraisal also went up. I know last year was really a strange year, and I think our valuations dropped way down. So it may be that, I don't have the, the, the total aggregate from two years ago, but possibly we're just getting back to where we should have been, I think, last year, as opposed, you know, in comparison to the year before. So that'd be 2018, I guess. So anyway, until we can sort this out better and get our strategic plan priorities more for certain, you know, I'm willing to put off the decision on what the actual tax rate should be until that September 21st meeting. And that's why I made the motion. So that's my rationale.
Thank you, Warren. And, and this is the mayor, and I just wanted to point out that in the example that was provided, we were talking about a $500,000 home and that being a $45 annual increase in taxes. Just, just remember that, that when Marcy talked about the numbers that she got from the county just prior to our last meeting, the average home value and had, the average home value in Hazlet went from 298 to 317. So the average home would, would have an increase in the neighborhood of $30, not $45 a year, number one. Number two, if, if we did that, that $30 cost, but that, that roughly $70,000 a year, that's there every year thereafter because that's part of your tax rate from that point forward. It's very difficult, and I've said this before, once you lose that revenue, it's hard to retrieve it at a later date. So just, just food for thought. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
This is Tanya Mara. Do you want to make, I have one more comment, just to make sure I'm clear. So we're, we're the option of 3.5 this year, or we can bank that and do a full 7 next year. That's correct?
Yet, yes, ma'am, that is correct. But if we're struggling with 3.5, and I realize we're in a pandemic, but I, I really, I really question that we're going to have the, the ability to, to decide that a year from now, we're going to be in so much better shape that we'll go 7% as opposed to 3.5. I, I just think it's going to be, it's easy to kick that can down the road. It's going to be a tougher decision next year on the 7, I think, than the 3.5. That's just my personal view. But you're, you're entirely correct, Tanya.
Okay, right, thank you.
Anybody else with a question or comment? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. I'll, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams? I, I'm not hearing you, Harold. Okay, I got a thumbs up. Diana, if that's okay with you, I, I got a thumbs up from Harold. Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Ten E, consider an act to set a date for adoption of the tax rate for the 2020 tax year.
Okay, this item would set the date for the adoption of the tax rate. And as I mentioned earlier, and based on your most recent motion, we would have the hearing on the 21st, and at the conclusion of that hearing, you would adopt the tax rate.
So I think based on the previous motion, what we need to do here is to set that date for September 21st. So I would entertain a motion to do that.
Mayor, this is Hillborn. I move to set September 21st, 2020 is the date for adoption of the tax rate for the 2020 tax year.
Is there a second?
This is Jessica Clark, I'll second.
Jessica seconds. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Ten F, consider an act to establish a date for adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Yes, on this item, the way I wrote my report, I didn't make it clear that we need a budget hearing prior to the adoption of the budget. And I talked about the hearing, but I didn't put it in the recommended motion. So once again, the budget adoption is scheduled for September 21st at your regular scheduled meeting. You would need a, to have a budget hearing prior to the adoption of the budget. So I would ask that, in the motion, that the date, and the date for the adoption of the budget, that you would also include setting a public hearing on that same date.
Okay. So we need to set a date for a public hearing for the budget and, and a date for the budget itself?
Yes.
Anybody want to tackle that motion?
Mayor, I will. To establish a date for a public hearing and the adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2020-2021.
Is there a second?
This is Tanya Mara, I'll second. You said September 21st, is that correct? That date, okay.
Yes, ma'am, I think that's correct. And any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Ten G, deliberate, discuss, and take action regarding review of the FY 2021 proposed budget and strategic plan.
I think the only, I think the strategic plan's been set and the budget's been set. It's just the, still, we have a discussion regarding the chapel. I just need to know from Travis what he's updating the information.
All right, on the chapel, I have an estimate in hand for the move and foundation of the chapel. I have one contractor that has provided an estimate to prepare plans, to then prepare cost estimate for repair. And I'm waiting on one more contractor estimate before I present the entire package to council. So I don't have a full price yet. I've got pieces, which is why you haven't seen anything full yet. But as soon as I get it, y'all will have.
Okay, preferably Travis, do we have a, a more thorough update by the 8th of September?
Yes, we should have it by then.
Anybody else with a question or comment?
I have one, of course. Since our last meeting, our financial director has, has provided some information about what it costs us on a monthly basis for the community center. And in 2019, it was right at $1,000 a month, and that included about $4,900 in upgrades to the interior, which a blue was, was carpeting and chairs. In 2020, our budget is for about $800 a month for that building. So if we're going to, if we're going to restore this historic- So if we're going to, if we're going to restore this historical building and have it be a multi-use facility for our different departments who will, who will staff it when they need it themselves, then I think we can use the cost that we're spending on the community center as a, as a good guideline to what we can expect to spend on that building. I think honestly, it should be way within that. But if we wanted to be conservative and, or, you know, think about, if this is not what we need for the current, that the, the upcoming budget that we're talking about, but the question was raised, what's it going to cost us to keep this building open? And I, I, I'm suggesting that it's going to be about what we spend on the community center, which is a totally reasonable amount for the use that it will provide the city. And I, and I, I believe that if we need to, I'm sure that Jim could provide that information to you that Marcy provided to me, sorry, sorry, it's a little chart that she prepared. And you don't have to take my word for it, in other words.
So not to be argumentative, I have two, two points. Number one, you said to restore this historical building. And I don't think you meant in the classic definition case because it's not a historical building, right? It's to meet the definition of historical building. It's not on anybody's list of historical buildings, is that correct?
It's historical for Haslett's history. That's my point.
And then, and then there was a comment made at the last meeting. Are we doing, are we considering doing a historical renovation versus a renovation? And what does historical renovation mean if, if we are?
I think that's a good question. I think, I don't think we're going to restore it to being a church. So there may be some elements of the interior that are not necessary to be restored, such as perhaps the baptistry. However, I think we'd like to make it resemble, at least from the exterior, what it looks like originally. But, but that would be up to, that would be based on my, just in my opinion, what the, what these contractors provide to Travis and how we, we use those as the starting point for that discussion. I don't think we have to decide that tonight. No.
No, I, I agree. I was just asking the question. And then I think what we spend on the renovation, the fixing up, whatever we want to call it, i- is going to be dependent on, on what the ultimate use is. I mean, at one point, several months ago, in a discussion, whether it was the church that brought this up or somebody on council, that there was the possibility that we would use the building to, to hold weddings in. And, and, you know, if we're going to use it as a chapel for weddings, that's a little bit different rehab, if you will, for lack of a better word, than, than a meeting room. And I'm just trying to get us to nail down what it is that we're going to use it for. And, and you gave us a list last month with some ideas, but it will, but that will have an impact on what we do to fix it up on the interior.
And that was the church. The church said about using it as a wedding venue. I don't think that was anything that council had suggested. The church said that.
Well, actually, the board representing, speaking on behalf of the church, said that if it remained in place, they'd be able to keep the chapel and use it for weddings like that. And that, the city never said that, it was the, Mr. I can't.
The, the maintenance on this building is going to be nothing like the community center because it's a, a wooden structure versus a brick building. So from, I, I did a lot of reading about something like this. According to what I read, it would need to be painted once over eight to ten years. Jim is supposed to be getting a quote from those contractors on what, what it's going to cost to paint it. The insurance is probably going to be considerably higher since it's a wooden structure versus brick. That's, that was the first two things that I thought about.
And I think we're, we're just trying to, to work at, at coming up with a, a good, a good guesstimate on, on what it's going to cost us so we don't get surprised down the road. I, I'm, you know. Anybody else on? Go ahead.
Actually, I, I appreciate that. And that's why I've been, I've asked Marcy to provide what, what we know, what we know we were spending. And Harold's right, we don't know for sure. This building may cost more in other ways. It won't have a kitchen where there's appliances running all the time. It won't, it won't have some of the things that we're paying for in the community center. So, so maybe it won't be quite so dramatically different from what we're expecting. But yes, that's, let's give as much information as we can.
I grew up in a building, a house that was built nineteen oh three. It had wood siding. And I remember us in the summer, Dad would take three of us out there and we'd paint that house about every four years.
Hey, it sounds like we got somebody that knows how to paint old houses.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It was cheap labor. We worked for food. And that's what we did, so. But it was interesting, you know, we had a red, red house for a while, then we had a white house for a while, whatever Dad felt he liked to paint it. So, yeah, it takes some maintenance and the painting is a very good thing for a wooden building.
Well, Jim, I think we could set up a grill out there and barbecue and, and have whatever you wanted to eat.
Oh, really?
So that wouldn't be expensive.
Sure. Well, I can bring Spencer down.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was going to say.
Anybody else have anything for the proposed budget and strategic plan? I would recommend that we just continue this and, and continue this discussion on the eighth before we make a decision, the final decision on the twenty-first.
I have a question before you move on. And I need to actually file a proposed budget with the city secretary. And so I, I would, if, if you're satisfied with the way everything looks thus far, I will tweak it for some things that I didn't know earlier. I have the new retirement rate, which is very minimal. And I would use the items that are on the capital list for the budget and place those in as the list was presented to you this evening, if that's your intention. And once again, it is a proposed budget. You can still discuss as often as you would wish to up until the time you adopt it. And so I just would ask if basically what you have received it, received earlier, plus the addition of the capital that's on the worksheet that you've, that you've had consensus on this far, is what I would place in the budget if, if, if that's your consensus.
And anybody have a problem with doing just what Marcy said just now?
Wasn't there one other item? I think Dad had mentioned it about the Kimmely Horn recurring up to fifty thousand dollars per year from Fund Thirty. Is that also shown in the budget or does it need to be?
Yes, that is in the ATAP project, Fund Thirty. And actually, the three years' worth of that is in that fund budgeted because it is fifty thousand a year for three years. So we went ahead and, and budgeted for the total thing in Fund Thirty so that it acts more or less as a placeholder for the future, so it's not forgotten.
Are, are we comfortable with continuing this to, to the next, next regular meeting? Or, or Rob, is there, is there some other appropriate action we should take? Because I, I, I think that we probably want to, want to hold off on finally approving both those at this time. At least that's the sense I'm getting from council.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're not going to approve the budget until you approve the budget in September, but Marcy just needs the, we, that budget has to be filed thirty days in advance. And so she needs your okay, direction, whatever, to go ahead and, and submit that budget as, as, as what's been presented.
Mr. Mayor, can I, okay?
What I would do is, is much like I've done in the interim, is if you make any changes along the way from what I file to what would be the current at the time of the hearing, that we would make sure all the current information is in the packet. So that's available to the citizens. So if they want to discuss it at the hearing, they will be aware that there might be some changes from what was filed, but they would have all the updated information.
And we can make sure that's online also, yes. Okay. So is there, is there action that we need to take on this item? If, if we continue it, is that, does that solve the problem? I mean, if we, nobody, nobody countered what you were saying. So I'm assuming unless somebody pipes up now that we're okay with what you just said, Marcy, as far as presenting the proposed with the, the corrections or additions that you know you're, you're trying to make this evening.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that this item is, this is a recurring item and there's no real action required this evening. This item is being, is recurring on agendas until we have the action for the budget that Marcy needs. And so there's, there's no action to be taken this evening and staff has received its instruction.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move on. If, if we're ready, go on to ten H. Consider an act to approve ordinance zero two one twenty twenty calling a special measure, let's special measure election for November third, twenty twenty for the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Haslett at the rate of one quarter of one percent, point two five percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets.
Mayor and council, as you're all aware, the election for May was postponed. And one of the items that we should have had an election for was to extend or renew the, the one quarter of one percent rate to continue to provide for the maintenance and repair of our streets. And so with approval of this ordinance, you're calling this special election for that item for November third. And so we, we're just asking you to approve ordinance oh two one twenty twenty as presented.
Diana, is the, is the wording for the ballot what's under proposition in, in the, in the ordinance itself? It's, that, that'd be the second page of the ordinance. Says proposition.
Let me look here. Yes, sir. Uh huh.
Okay, so my, my question to you or to Rob or Jim, whomever, is in the worst-case scenario where the citizens do not vote for this, that, does, do we revert back? I mean, is this the actual wording and can it be changed, Rob? Because what we don't want to do is lose that quarter cent.
That is, I understand your concern, but this is required statutory language. This is the ballot language that must be used. So there's no, there's no option there. If, if it doesn't get approved, we'll have to deal with that. And you know, it, it doesn't automatically revert back. There was the ability when we had the election to begin with, to do a combined ballot election where it was a either, either or. Basically, if, if, if the citizens did not vote to pull it from the EDC, then it would just, it just stayed. It, it didn't get lost. But in this, in this instance, on the renewal, we have to use exact ballot language, which is why that's in the ordinance.
Okay, so I understand what you just said. And, and, and I was confused with the either or last time. But if, if this did not pass, what happens to, I mean, we're authorized up to two percent, right? Sales tax. Right now, one percent goes to the general fund, half goes to A, or excuse me, half goes to B, a quarter goes to A, and a quarter goes to, to the road maintenance. If this does not pass, does the city just have a, a one and three-quarter cent sales tax at that point?
I think that's correct. Until we, less than until something else is authorized to, to, to utilize that.
Well, I, I think based on your prior guidance, and I apologize for beating this to death, we, th- this isn't going to cost our citizens anything other than they might save a quarter percent sales tax. Most of that's being paid for by non-Haslett residents. So we can't take an official position once it's going to be on the ballot as a council. But in talking with your neighbors, your friends, be sure to let them know that it's sales tax number one and it's maintaining roads with that quarter cent that we're trying to ask them to continue. And, you know, we can talk up what we've been able to do, you know, with that money in, in the recent past and what we're doing, you know, coming up here in the new future. So short of, of campaigning, which we obviously cannot do because it's on the ballot. If, if I'm speaking incorrectly here or inappropriately, Rob, please bring it to my attention. I don't think we can campaign for this, but we can certainly share factual information with our neighbors.
Well, yeah, you, you were corrected in your statement earlier. The city is prohibited from expending city funds to promote before or against a ballot proposition. But you all, as individuals, even though you're elected officials, you haven't lost your right to individually go out and promote, you know, try and drum up support for this or whatever, whatever you're inclined to do. And, and you don't lose the ability, you don't have to not say you're not, that you don't have to like disclaim that you're a council member or anything. I mean, you're free to go out and, and individually promote this and try to sway voters, but the city can't use city funds to like send out flyers or, you know, other than just fact, purely factual information.
Anybody have a question? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we can put on our website how much money the, the sales tax is generated and that we've spent the money on thus far and what we're going to, what we're proposing in the coming year to send that money for? Is that something that the city can put on their website?
It has to be factual, it has to be vetted by the city attorney, is not for or against the language of the, you can certainly put on there how much money you've collected, how much money you spend, what's proposed to be spent. That's factual information. And that's, that's all we can do is to do that. But it has to be vetted by the city attorney, read very carefully because you do have people out there, you know, reading that fact sheet and they may, if they see one iota that we're, the city council's trying to get people to vote for it, they're going to challenge you.
Mr. Mayor approach him. Fortunately, I like the wording of the proposition that appear on the ballot. It does specify the reauthorization, you know, and then, then talks about it expires on the fourth anniversary. So it needs to be reauthorized. It's not like an initial authorization. So, you know, hopefully it will be good.
With, with all that said, if we're ready, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance number zero two one twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hillborn seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Ten I, discuss, consider an act on the advanced funding agreement amendment number one between the Texas Department of Transportation and the city of Haslett for the construction of the Alliance Texas Haslett Accessibility Project. This is the same item as ten Mike, ten M, which has supporting documentation. Don't need to read that one again, I don't think. So what I would recommend we do is go right to ten M, the same item, because it has the, that's a supporting documentation there. Rob, are you okay with that?
Sure, you, unless council has a problem with it. I mean, y'all can move items around and that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay. So now we're talking, okay, so how do we, ten I is on the agenda. Diana, do you have a recommendation? Do we just include that as the same item as ten? Do we just include that as the same item as 10M at this point so that it doesn't appear as a blank?
Mayor, if you're, you just say that you're calling 10I and 10M identical items, then we will just go ahead and, and let staff give you your presentation.
Great, 10M, let's go, guys.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got Ricardo Gonzalez is also on the line with Tech Dot. He works under the district engineer at our local office. I'm going to lead this out and if I get in trouble, he's here to help. The item before you is the first amendment to the advanced funding agreement that council got together and approved on July 13th. This is not the amendment that still is to occur that will add the regional transportation council as the responsible party for project overages. So what we have here are several different pieces to this item. First off, we have the obligation agreement that is required to, for Tech Dot to execute with the federal highway administration to obligate the $20 million bill grant. We thought we were done with that on July 13th. We knew amendments may come before the project is actually started construction. But when Tech Dot got into discussions on executing the obligation agreement, what they found is what we kind of found last time on July 13th, the funding tables did not match with these tip and step mods and our funding table in the AFA looked like the project was underfunded. Federal Highway does not like that. So the amendment tonight is the first of at least two. This one only addresses the shortfall shown in the funding table. Again, this is so that by September 18th, which is the cutoff for the obligation agreement and the obligation of those $20 million in federal funds, that that agreement can be executed between Tech Dot and federal highway administration. Again, this piece is required. It must be approved as presented tonight or that obligation will not occur. So that's the first piece of this. The, again, there will be a second amendment at least that will add RTC, the Regional Transportation Council, as the responsible third party for cost overruns if those exist in the project. But again, there was no time to add them and get their approval through this process. So again, that's one piece of this item is the key to us getting the $20 million for this project is approving this amendment as presented. One item that is a little different is when payment will be due. Approving this AFA does not mean that we're going to transfer money, even the 7.6 million listed in that table this week or next week. I talked to Ricardo earlier today and he's worked with Lowell Bussel and they've discussed the project can actually be let. And that process is when they go out and say, we have this big project, here are the plans, what is, what are you going to bid to build this road? The letting for the project is supposed to occur October 1st or 2nd. I don't know which date we have for that one, but it's very early in October. Again, the letting is going to happen after the obligation. That is not uncommon, so these are somewhat unrelated. We've got to approve this AFA for obligation. I'm talking about the payment structure now. Once that project is let October 1st or 2nd, it would be awarded October 28th, or I think it was October 28th. Ricardo, can you tell me if that is correct? Is it October 28th or 29th that the commission meets to award projects? May have lost him.
No, I'm here. Sorry. So yes, our letting will be October 2nd or 3rd, beginning of October. It will then be compiled and go to the Tech Dot Commission. The Tech Dot Commission will meet October the 29th for final award. So going in and saying when payment needs to be received will be prior to that so we can have authorization from RDE to go ahead and authorize and, and get the recommendation to our commission for award of that.
Right now, we're looking at, in the discussion with Ricardo, is probably about October 16th is when those funds would be due. Again, I broke it down in the project, all of those funds are there. They've all been approved in some various fashion. A total of $8 million has been approved in funding through, again, the regional toll revenue, Tarrant County, plus the developer funds and all the type A and type B funds. So the, this was one issue that Rob Alabon and I worked on is we wanted to make sure that although we know an amendment is coming, that even if council approves this, funding is already approved. We're not asking you to approve something that exceeds any authority or vote that has occurred prior to this. So again, what we would look to do is approve this AFA amendment one tonight, if that is your desire. If it is, I would ask that you, as part of that motion, authorize the mayor to execute that document since he executed the original AFA. I talked to Mr. Quinn earlier and we thought that consistency would be good. And then I would work diligently to press Tech Dot and the North Central Texas Council of Governments to bring forth as quickly as possible an amendment that at least address that RTC issue prior to that October 16th date. Again, we believe that can happen so that council is comfortable that that piece is wrapped up prior to those funds being transferred. My agenda item indicated, you know, in reading that language, we might have until January when construction started. That is not the case. Again, Ricardo has clarified that. So we have between the project let, October 2nd and 3rd is what Ricardo said, and commission meeting October 29th, and we're looking at about October 16th. So again, a lot of information, extremely complex, but the key point tonight is you're not going to have to transfer any money this week or next week or before we meet again, but that this AFA amendment needs to be approved as written by Tech Dot and reviewed by Rob Alabon for the obligation to occur by September 18th and get that $20 million into the project. I think I've gone on enough. I'd like to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments or Ricardo, anything that you want to add to what that has said?
I just kind of wanted to present myself. I didn't want to be in the dark with everybody. No, but just want to say that we've been kind of working with that, kind of working with NCT Cog to try to get this project to fruition. I know we've had a lot of challenges throughout here to try and get everything to line up. But again, I think everybody's kind of worked together, you know, working side to side with that and the mayor, NCT Cog, you know, we're really working hard to try to get this project for y'all and try to get this to fruition. So again, we're here to kind of work with y'all hand in hand and to be a good partner for you guys as well. So anything we can do, just let us know.
Any questions or comments? Anybody want to make a motion then if, if you're comfortable with approving this AFA amendment?
This is Tanya Morrow. I move to approve the advanced funding agreement amendment number one between the Texas Department of Transportation and the city of Haslett for the construction of the Alliance Texas Haslett Accessibility Improvement Project and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
Two seconds.
And any further discussion? Bearing down a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Gerald Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Tricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Ricardo, thank you very much for hanging in there for all this time. We appreciate it, sir. Thank you for being here.
Not a problem. You're timed.
10J, discuss, consider an act upon a park board recommendation for replacement of playground equipment at Gamble Park.
All right, good evening again. This is, I've been a long time coming. This was approved in the 1920 budget items. This is a playground replacement for Gamble Park. It's been delayed a little bit due to the COVID issues where we've had to delay park board meetings or outright cancel them. So what we are looking at now is a final proposal from three different companies. We Build Fun, Worlix, and Lee Park and Play. These went before the July 8th meeting. The board discussed that elements of all three bids were desirable and asked that bidders modify their proposals to incorporate additional elements and change features such as open slides compared to closed slides, which are easier to clean. Now that we're looking at things like that, trying to figure out how, how do we clean things in a, in a post-COVID world? The August 12th board meeting, which was last Wednesday, revised proposals were presented and discussed. Park Board has recommended the design presented by We Build Fun. We Build Fun has also done the playgrounds for all 27 NISD campuses. So they've got a very, a really good local reputation, elementary campuses. Eighty-five, 185,000 was budgeted in the City Parks Approvements Fund. Staff recommends approval of the park board recommendation. There was one option that they would have like considered was a bigger platform swing. And We Build Fun has already confirmed with the city engineer that they can do that within budgeted resources. They sent a mock-up late Friday that I didn't have time to get into your council packet, but basically the swing is going to be in the same place with a bigger platform. And the reason that they wanted that was because you can easily unload and load a person in a wheelchair to that swing. So with that, staff recommends approval of the park board recommendation, awarding the contract. We want, we want to get this going so that we can utilize these times when the parks are closed to be, to get in there, to build a new playground and get, get exactly what the park board wanted to do with this, with this funding. So I will open it up to any questions.
Any questions for, for Travis?
As Mayor pro tem, I have one question on implementation. I mean, if they came out and put it in tomorrow, we couldn't let anybody use it. So the question, I guess the question, and I don't have an answer, is okay, what is the best timing for this? I mean, is there a trigger for, okay, now we're, I'm, I'm going to assume that it takes them a couple of weeks maybe to install this. So at what point would we be, feel comfortable to say, okay, you can put it in now because we're going to let people use it? Right now, we'd just be sitting out there, you know, aging in the sun.
So this, because we're completely changing out the entire function of the park, basically, we're taking out all the old equipment, we're taking out all the base, taking out, we're going to replace the fence there. This is a couple of week process, this is more of a couple of month process. So this is actually the time to do it when it's, when it's shut down. The surface that they proposed is the safety surface, which you can, you can fall on, I think from a height of five or six feet. I'd have to look at the specifications. So that's going to take some excavation and digging to get that in there. So this, this would be the time, eight foot, eight foot fall height was what I was reaching for in my brain. But this is, now is the time to do it, especially when we're in the dry season as well, because it is a park, it is subject to flooding still. We want to have this open, actually not, well, open and in place by spring so that if we do get flooding rains, it just rolls around the new equipment. We don't have to worry about any, anything going away.
Well, Travis, to take, to take the mayor protest point a little bit further, if we, if we got to the point where it was completed, we're still in, in this pandemic, would we take the swings down as soon as we put them up, as soon as Public Works knows how to, how to, you know, do that or, or, you know, what kind of steps would we make so that we're not inviting disaster?
Sure. So the, the good thing about their proposal is that all of their equipment fits within the existing fenced area, which is locked. As of, as of today, it's locked. So we are, are still able to control access to that, even if the pandemic were to stretch in to many, many months from now. I know that the areas around us, some of their playgrounds have opened. We've been kind of cautious on opening them. But yes, we do have control to, to keep that area blocked off.
Thank you. Anybody else with any questions or comments?
I have, I have one. In the previous discussion, we talked about possibly reusing the existing playground equipment that's there. Some of it may be at a different location. Was that explored any further? Were there any conclusions? Can we keep this out at the public works area until we decide or does it just have to go in the garbage?
Most of the equipment is, is outdated and if you look at current safety guidelines, you, you wouldn't want to have that same equipment. We certainly can find a place to store it. For now, we can have the public works crews take that down just to see if it can be reused somewhere. I know that the, I looked at the park, the playground equipment at Nance the other day and noticed the same kind of features that we're just kind of breaking down over time. But there's, there's always possibility that we can reuse, reutilize. If that, if that's what council would desire, we can certainly look into that.
Well, is, is part of the contract where they haul off the old stuff?
That, yes, the demolition was in there. We certainly can salvage that equipment, though.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be what I was going to point out was if, if you, somebody needs to be able to make a decision and I guess council would need to authorize you or David or whomever to, to make that decision. I don't know that we're qualified to do it, but to, to, to save anything that, that you want to say that, that you think is salvageable and, and not, not have us be obligated to, to take care of stuff after the fact if, if it's not going to be useful. I think, I think Trish has a good point. If, if it's something we can use, then somebody needs to make a decision and hold on to it. Otherwise, let it go so we don't have to worry about, you know, stacking up garbage. And that kind of what you were trying to get to, Trish?
I think we should take some pictures of it, find out if there's any cities around that might want it. Obviously, Fort Worth or somebody like that is not going to want it, but us. An older city that maybe doesn't have much money might want the stuff. And then we could just donate it to them.
Yeah, we have some poor neighbors out to the, out to the west and north that, that might be willing to take that on and have something that they don't have available right now.
I hate to say it, but I think Diana's staff is probably the right person, right group to do that, to try to connect with these other cities. Am I, am I wrong? Or do our public works guys know the public works people from other cities?
There, there is actually a tool that, where we can list old equipment and things like that, that other cities see, kind of a board, electronic board. But again, if Travis is correct and these items don't meet safety standards of today, then, you know, what kind of liability would we have if we pass it on to someone else? Rob?
Thanks, Diana. It's the same, you know, cities will give like bulletproof vests that are by law that only last a certain period of time. And when then they replace those, they will be passed on. And that can be done. And if, if we're going to do that, then we do it with some sort of release or something when we do that. So it, it can be done if that's something that, that council wants to do and there's somebody that wants it.
that council wants to do and there's somebody that wants it, we can, we can protect ourselves from that. But that's a good point, Diana. We probably need to do something like that if we're going to do it.
Well, I'll get with David Rogers and on, because he does have quite the network of other city contacts and, and we'll see who might be interested in using that equipment.
There, there is a very vast network of, of public works employees. When we first started this whole COVID thing, there was a, a basically a reach out to all the small cities around saying, if you're, one of your employees go down, let us know. We'll send somebody to take your required daily water sample. So we do have a vast network of, of public works employees.
I think we've pretty much fleshed that out. Does anybody want to make a motion to, to back up the park board and, and award this to We Build for Fun?
I have a question about the motion. Does it need to include the amount? Does it need to say like not to exceed and then to have that budgeted amount?
This is Rob. I think that's a good idea.
And it's 185,000 that's budgeted, is that correct, Travis?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll make a motion, give me just a second to find it. Or someone else can do it because I'm taking so long. Okay. I move the city council approve the Hasslet Park Board recommendation to award We Build Fun for the Gamble Park Playground Equipment Replacement. Not exceed $185,000. Now, do I need to add that last bit since they've already agreed to it or should I? With direction to the manufacturer to replace one of the swings with a platform swing if possible within budgeted resources.
That's good. Tanya, was that you? Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion? So a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. 10K, discuss, consider and act on Amendment 3 to an agreement with Timely Horn for construction phase services related to the construction of the Alliance Texas Hasslet Accessibility Improvement Project.
All right. This is coming from my office due to that the original contract agreements came through the engineering, the engineer's office or administration office. And basically, once we get to construction, that will pop back over into my world. Whereas that has been the construction or the project manager on the design side, the construction will flip back over to the engineering side once we get there. Now, the current contract for the design phase services is expected to be complete when the project is bid. I got an invoice today that says we are at 96%. So we are close to having that contract be out the door, bid, ready to go to construction. That's half the battle though. Once you get to construction, there's always something in the field that changes. They'll find something that doesn't line up right. There could be an errant utility in the way, a grade that just doesn't quite compute once you get out to the field. And that's why you need construction phase services. You need to have that engineer that designed it on standby to answer questions, to, to, if there's any request for change in materials. And especially since we're kind of outside the normal text dot design where we're using a different CAD or computerated drafting platform than they're used to. We need to have that ability for the design engineer to answer questions. So this is a not to exceed fee of $50,000 a year. It's based on their current rates, starting on October 1st this year. We are looking at the project to take 18 to 24 months. So this amendment puts in for two automatic renewals at the $50,000 a year for total contract amount amendment of 150,000. We spoke about that earlier in the budget. If the project construction finishes before, there's obviously no automatic renewal. The amendment's been vetted through the city attorney. Staff recommends approval of the contract amendment and I will open it up to any questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Sounds like a necessary evil. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that the city council approve Amendment 3 for the contract with Timely Horn for construction phase services presented and authorized the city administrator to execute the agreement.
Mayor protest, seconds.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. 10L, discuss, consider and act regarding cancellation of special events scheduled through December 31st, 2020. Travis, you just keep coming up, don't you?
I do. I, I try to group them all together. So we have the COVID-19 pandemic continuing. Unfortunately, we have some long lead item events that need to be looked at. The Hasslet Hustle was scheduled for the same day as the Haunted Hay Ride, which the fire department has already canceled. That, that's an event that typically draws around 200 people and including staff. I personally have it run with the mask on. I don't know if you can. It's hard to breathe doing a 5K. I just don't know if I would recommend that. The other event is the Christmas in the Park and that's really the one that we're looking at more of the long lead item on because we already have expended some funds for that. There's the current contract for Christmas in the Park, so there's no refunds. We have not heard back from the group that we've contracted to be Santa to reindeer and sleigh, sleigh rides. We would hope that, that we would call them and if, if the event were to be canceled and say for extenuating circumstances, we're, we would request this money to be forwarded to another year. It's a pretty popular event. I don't know where we're going to be at December. I don't think anybody can predict that. It's, it's just kind of an ongoing thing. We just look for these long lead items. It did include the 2020 community events and you could see that all have been canceled except for the Hassle Hustle and Christmas in the Park. I want to point out that this doesn't stop us from decorating. We, we're still going to decorate the park. We're still going to make sure the tree is up. All the decorations are up. Just the actual lighting of the, the tree, the ceremony, people sitting on Santa's lap, the reindeer, the snow globe, that type of thing is what should be considered tonight. So Christmas isn't canceled. I just want to put that out there. But perhaps the in, the in-person event should be canceled. So staff does recommend canceling the Hassle Hustle in conjunction with the Haunted Hay Ride and the Christmas in the Park event, and I will open it up for comments.
Council members?
This is Tanya Morrow. Yeah, you make great points and I think only being $2,000 out is good and I know how expensive that stuff is. So I'm all in favor for canceling both.
Anybody else?
Maybe we can do a virtual tree lighting. At, at the very least, you know, and, and I don't really begrudge Sam a couple of thousand dollars. He's not getting much work this year, I bet.
Well, I want to commend council on the very conservative position that you've been taking throughout the pandemic. Some of our sister cities have been scheduling, canceling, scheduling, canceling. And, and, and at least our citizens know where we are. We're being very consistent. And I would rather miss an event, which we've missed several, but I would, I'd rather miss a future event and, and maintain that same safety factor. This thing is still out there and we've got to honor the threat and, and thank you for your support in that. Kurt and Jim and I really appreciate council supporting us in that, in that position. Having said that, anybody want to make a motion?
This is Jessica Clark. I move city council, council, I move city council cancel the Hassle Hustle and Christmas in the Park event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Harold, seconds. Any further discussion? Harold, I've got the second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
I am Bah Humbug.
Yeah, I understand. Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. 10N, like November, discuss, consider and act to excuse mayor and council absences. Anybody have any coming up? Hearing none, on to 11, receive report from Public Improvement District Subcommittee. Rob?
Mayor and council, no new activity on any of the Pids and don't have anything new to report unless you all have any questions.
Any of the committee members have anything they want to add? Any questions? And hearing none, unfortunately, we are going to executive session tonight. The city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551071 of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to the provision of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in section 551072 and section 551071 as posted. This, at this time, I'd like to close the open part of the meeting. That's 9:40. And we'll see an exec, and I for one need to make a pit stop. So I may be a minute or so.
Mayor, can we take, can we take that first with the right of way?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Diana, since I'm on a not my normal computer, can you text me the link to exec or email it to me? What, when it's my turn?
To your city email or just text it?
City email's fine. I've got my phone. I just need to know what.
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you so much. Just text me when it's my turn.